Recording in progress.
Mike, good morning, everybody. It is ten o'clock. Thursday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Welcome to Harney County Work Session. A topic of discussion today is American Rescue Plan Act funds that the county received and obligating and or finding expenditures, authorized expenditures for those funds. We have a deadline. They have to be obligated or expended by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And then expended by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So we are here as the, and I thought, oh, there she is. She said she was gonna join via Zoom, but she just, just.
That was the other meeting.
Commissioner Doro, can you hear us? Yeah, you're muted.
Yep, finally got on.
Okay, the record show Judge Hart, Commissioner Shelman are present, Commissioner Doro by, by Zoom. So, um, I guess shopping list of what, of what we kind of look, are looking at maybe doing. Uh, some good rundown on some authorized for the ARPA funds. The big one is replacing lost revenues for the county. And I'm doing some research on that right now. I believe because we receive the minimum or baseline amount of ARPA funding. Uh, there is a, a standard deduction that the county can, can take. I'm not sure how that formula works yet. I'm trying to find out. I've, uh, sent an email this morning off to NACO. Point of contact on how that's determined. And how we would figure that, but it, it goes towards just general services. The recovery funds used to replace revenue losses are the most flexible and may be used for a broad range of government services, programs, and projects outside of typical eligible uses of recovery funds under the final rule is quoted in the NACO manual or handout on, um, on ARPA funds. Uh, some examples, construction of schools and hospitals, road building and, and maintenance and other infrastructure, health services, general government administration, staff and administrative facilities, environmental remediation, and police, first responders, and other public safety services. To include, as it says, uh, fire trucks and police vehicles.
Well, and, uh, just so you're aware, when you see on the ledger for, uh, expenditures that were made of the transfer to Fund Two-Four-Three Predator Control was what we had designated under a replacement of lost revenue. We think we weren't able to get a district for predator control. And so that was our qualifying expenditure of a hundred and sixty thousand that we already made, uh, that was under that type of designation.
Okay, so we may have, now, yeah, it's, it's my understanding that they changed, and I'm trying to track this down, but they changed the formula. Um, I don't know exactly how, but basically to our good, where we could get, allocate more funds. Potentially, so if we've already done a hundred and sixty, if the formula comes out to be more, we could get, we could probably transfer some more of that. To, to, but I'm, I'm waiting on that formula. That's one topic, or the lost revenues. Um, public health and negative economic impacts is another category. Some of those uses include all categories, uh, capital expenditures and applicable standards. So this stuff is all, it's really vague and trying to find some guidance on it. Impacted households, affordable housing, childcare, early learning services, and services to address learning loss during pandemic are eligible. Disproportionate impacted households, certain community development, and neighborhood revitalization activities eligible for this disproportionate impact communities. And dis- disproportionately impacted small businesses. A broader set of businesses support such as rehabilitation of storefronts and business incubators. Next category, uh, pub, well, kind of, I guess, talks more about public health. COVID nineteen, under public health, COVID nineteen mitigation, medical expenses, behavioral healthcare. Or public sector capacity, public safety, public health, and human services. Capital expenditures, county can use recovery funds for capital expenditures that respond to public health and negative economic, so it's still under the public health category. Broadband, which we already spent some funds towards broadband and the application for the grants.
Yes, eighty-three thousand was spent towards broadband.
So, my guess, so where we kind of come together and make our pitches of different projects or things that, that, uh, that, uh, maybe we'd like to see funded or whatever. Um, I have had a conversation, and I wasn't sure last week, and that's why I said at the last county court session whether we might have to have a, uh, an executive session to discuss this topic, but I talked to, to the, uh, to MyWave, um, and asked them how, how sensitive this was, and they said it could be discussed, so in open court. So MyWave has a pu- has a possibility currently background. MyWave leases the, uh, Lottery Warmsite Building from the county, which has got, um, a no-cost basically lease from the state on a five-year term with renewable five-year. Actually, we're gonna have to re- redo it, uh, next year because the second five-year option is up and that the contract only, only identifies two, two terms. So if we continue on that rate, we would, we would be looking at five-year lease renewable options on that building. MyWave has a potential, has a, has a customer, an investor, or whatever you want to call it, that, that wants to rent, um, space, rack space, for data storage. But they're looking at wanting something that's more secure in a twenty-to-thirty-year timeframe. I don't know, I don't have, crystal ball, I have no idea what the state would do in five years or ten years down the road with that facility, and if we had somebody come in and do that, I'm sure they're gonna want more, more security than that. They are, this, this entity is, is already, um, acknowledged that they would have to invest money into the facility for, uh, A, for electrical and, and HVAC cooling system. So they're, so they're very interested in that, and I, one of my ideas was to purchase the building from the state. So I did some preliminary, uh, inquiries into it and, um, with DAS, with the Department of Administrative Services, Oregon. Uh, DAS basically is half owner in it, and the lottery, Oregon Lottery is half owner in it, and, and both have indicated that they would be willing to dispose of the building. But there would be, there would be some steps in that process. It has to be, it's currently all platted on the Oregon Youth Authority, uh, grounds, property out there, so it would have to be, uh, replatted and, and separated away from their property, which there's no, no, no concern there either. Uh, it's just a matter of formalities. Um, the building would have to be appraised. The last appraisal spent some time ago, but the building was appraised at three hundred thousand dollars, uh, the last time they, I guess, ten years ago, when they looked at this first, uh, this opportunity. Obviously, that's probably gonna go up a little bit. The, uh, lottery, Oregon Lottery has to get, uh, by statute, has to get fair market value for it, so their fifty percent ownership in it, whatever the building was appraised at, so we'll just say it appraised at four hundred thousand dollars. The lottery would have to get two hundred thousand dollars. DAS on the, on the state side is more lenient in negotiation on that, so it's, it might appraise at four hundred thousand, but maybe we get it at three hundred thousand. Those are things that would have to be worked out. So, so three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of that building is, I guess, would be my first, my first pitch. Um, and then I would leave about a hundred and seventy thousand, um, for other projects or other purposes. Um, if we could discuss that one first, I mean, if that's a go or a no-go, then we go to Plan B or Plan C or whatever.
Well, where we have the current arrangements, I, I feel like right now this money is a, a one-time opportunity to uh, support some ongoing projects that we already have. Uh, the original discussion with a lot of these funds was knowing that we did have a Fairgrounds project in motion that we'd need support as it got to these stages where it's actually underway. And so I, uh, personally would steer away from making the purchase of that building uh, at this time, just due to the fact that we already have a lease on it. Uh, the state is very unlikely to go away from our lease agreement um, over time, and so if this entity still wanted to rent from the county, I think that's still a very viable option to do, but um, I would prefer not to buy the building.
Um, the entity has, and again, this is all speculative. This is all speculation at this point, really. Uh, but the entity has expressed interest in, you know, if, if operations work out, uh, potentially building um, facility for data storage. But there's a lot to work out there, too, just like the ones that are in Cook County. The, the water consumption needs, the, the power needs, et cetera. So there's, there's there's hurdles that they have to look at, you know, um, but they have expressed, you know, if, if, if their initial, uh, incursion into Harney County for that type of facility or that kind of, uh, uh, work, then they would be interested in expanding. But again, it's all speculation.
Does any of the data center stuff fall under the broadband opportunities that are currently available? Patty, can you speak to that at all?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
It's just, uh, it would be a diversification in our, in our economy in Harney County, you know, going, getting into that high-tech world, the data storage world. Don't know how much of that, you know, I don't think we're ever gonna be able to facilitate on the scale that Cook County does, because we don't have the water resources for that.
No, and it'd be on the municipality, and so you'd have to, I mean, there's a lot of labor to, we don't, municipality about what their future water plans are versus what their current allocation is, because their allocation will increase due to the rat processes that are going on with groundwater allocation statewide.
So, anyway, it's, it's, it's one I wanted to put out there. I thought that it potentially could bring some other revenues to the county, um, and, um, foster a relationship that we have with MyWave, that we've, that the county has developed over several years, many years. So I wanted to put it on the table. Commissioner Doro?
Um, I know there's a lot of things we could put a little bit here, a little bit there, but that is not what I believe it, it would be a good use of, um, expending this money, which must be, um, appropriated, or what, what, what do we have to do by December thirty-first?
Obligated, obligated or expended by, by December thirty-first. The, um, and I just sent off an email this morning to NACO asking that, if we could obligate by resolution, or if it has to be, or if it has to be, uh, hard and fast contract type of obligation.
I, I believe we need to focus on capital expenditures that relate to economic development and, um, you know, that type of health for our community. We do have the Fair Event Center that is ongoing and, and is still gonna need some more money. Um, so I think that that should be something we talk about. Um, I don't know if the jail would put into any of that, and I'd like to hear maybe a little more from Commissioner Shelman on how the AFIS um, expenditures go, because that's important to us as well.
Um, just so that, uh, folks are aware, as far as the jail, there was, uh, an allocation of fifty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-five, uh, that was towards the jail for the Strollo architect. There was another allocation of eighty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five for Strollo architect for the jail. So there has been allocations of these funds that have already gone towards the jail project.
And those were, if those were.
In the jail planning phase.
And if those were, um, yeah, if those were to Strollo, it was before my, my tenure.
Um, if the court would entertain, uh, we did have a Fairgrounds, uh, Fair Board meeting the other night, uh, on Monday. And, uh, as you can see in the audience, we have a lot of members from the public that were in attendance there. Um, we did discuss that this session would be taking place, and so if, uh, the court would entertain some public comment from the people that came and also attended that, uh, I'd like to do that at this time.
Um, yeah, I don't mean, you know, work sessions don't have a hard and fast rule, but no public comment, so I don't, I'd rather hear from everybody that might be concerned. Is there anybody who speak on behalf of the, the project? Or, I mean, is, is there multiple people that have?
Care near is here from the Fair Board, so I think we could start.
Yeah, I would, uh, I'm, I'm, for the record, I'm a current year, I'm the Fair Board Chair, and, um, I think when we look at, um, the Fairgrounds project, and I know we've had a lot of discussion on, um, the economic opportunities that it can bring. I thought, I feel like that falls in line with what the ARPA funds were intended for. Um, this is a shovel-ready project that's already off the ground, and so the more funds that this project can receive, the more progress that can be done on the building. And that's gonna, in turn, enhance our community. So this is not only something that I feel like ARPA funds can be spent for. Um, it's also something that's gonna directly relate to an economic impact to our community. Um, I know we have, uh, lots of activities that, that already happened at the Fairgrounds, and I feel as if the, the Fairgrounds have been lost um, in, in budgeting concerns of the county and, and the infrastructure is, is all of it is very dilapidated, and so this is an investment not into uh, MyWave or a private company. This is investing into county infrastructure. Um, so, um, you know, we're not purchasing more buildings, or we're not, um, I'm picking one particular, um, company and, and trying to help support, um, them. This is, um, a project that can support um, multiple, um, uh, businesses within the community, so, um, anyway. I appreciate the time to say something, but I should think it's, um, it's super important that, um, we realize the magnitude of what the project we're working on, uh, could be.
And then Autumn, are you prepared to speak for the?
Sure, I am, I know. Um, so I guess for the record, I'm Autumn Tully Jackson. Um, I am the Secretary for the Harney County Youth Livestock Show and Auction Committee and the Treasurer for the 4-H Association. Um, and that's kind of to emphasize what Craig said, I think the Fairground project really supports the entire community as a whole. Even if we do something that promotes MeWave, that's still limited to a certain area and may not be beneficial to people down in fields where the Fairgrounds facility really brings everybody together from all corners of Harney County. Um, it allows facilities for emergency situations, whether that's a place to hold animals during wildfires like we had this last summer, or a place for incident management control, or a place for people to gather for whatever reason. Uh, it really supports tourism, so we have a lot of events that go there. The Bird Festival is probably one of the big ones, but we also have rodeos, shows, um, different craft fairs, opportunities for the public to get there. There's, the Memorial Building is there, and it will remain there, but just from experience within the last month at the 4-H Awards Show, we had to pick and choose what we were doing during that event because the power wasn't able to support even that amount. Um, the community or the Fairgrounds also promotes she'll use the activities, so it does a lot with Park and Recs, but it also, of course, could uh, support the, the Harney County Youth Livestock Fair and show and auction, which, just to give you guys some numbers, so last year at Fair, we had a hundred and seventy-nine youth registered. About a hundred and seven of those were 4-H, forty-six were in FFA, and twenty-six were independent. So you can see the fair really brings youth from multiple groups together. Um, in addition to that, through the auction, thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two pounds of live weight meat was donated to, let's see, the Shriners, Crane and Burne Schools, and the Senior Center, which that has an impact to them, not only just the people who are immediately employed or attend those locations, but that opens up those organizations to be able to spend their money on other items that will further support the economy in Harney County. Um, so I, I really think that the Fair facility is something that's needed in general, but if you're looking specifically at youth events and organizations, we're pretty limited with what we have in Harney County, and Fair and the Livestock Show is one of the big things that this county can support, which gives children skills that they need as they move forward. It helps them be leaders, it helps them understand teamwork and responsibility, which are key skills I think we want to instill in our youth. And so, while I know there's a lot of other uses, and as the county, you have a lot of ways to divide and manage your money. At this point, I think supporting the Fairground facility and ensuring that we have the facilities needed to continue these events should be a top priority.
Would you have the total from the auction?
The total amount, yes. So for sales, we had five hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. We had an additional add-on amount of ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty, which is quite a bit for people within the community to give back to the youth of this community. And so the total was six thousand, or six hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And then that money, what goes to the youth, may be saved for college or trade schools, saved for their futures, spent on future animals, spent also within the community.
And I think it's hard to, um, when you look at that kind of annual economic impact to this community, um, honestly, if the total amount of remaining ARPA funds were allocated towards this project, the investment annually that the community gives back to having this project in a completed phase is more than what we're offering towards per object with these dollars. And it's a rare opportunity that the county has to make those kind of investments back into the community and the economy in an amount that every single year annually we would get back in revenue that circles back into this county, economy, just by one event, not considering any of the other events that occur at that facility. Um, you know, we have high school rodeos, PB rodeos and everything, that also brings in large amount of dollars to the community. And so I think, you know, dollar for dollar, it's a huge and wise investment that this county has the opportunity to make. Um, you know, and being one that has helped secure a lot of the funding for this project, it's really hard to go back to the legislature for the additional needs that we'll have to complete Phase Two. If the county has made no direct investment into this project, um, and been able to have the maximum benefit out of Phase One of the project. And so I know that we have opportunities to do some more, uh, fundraising from the legislative side, but I don't see that opportunity being very profitable if we haven't had that investment in Phase One does not get uh, as far along as we would hope it would.
Yeah, I would like to add, I completely agree with that, and I also think one of the goals of both the Livestock Committee and 4-H and FFA is to really encourage youth to attend, to participate. And right now, I know we've talked to the Fair Board, we've agreed that there will be a place for the Livestock Show. But how exactly that'll look like, because currently the stall portion, which is the main part of the Livestock Show, isn't gonna be until Phase Two. It kind of, it's hard for us to recruit and say, hey, we're gonna have it, facilities, it's gonna be great. Come do this with us. The county supports us, everybody supports you. Look at this great facility we have. Instead, it's like, we'll have something, um, which makes it hard.
No, it, it would, it would allow for that part to get completed, um, by you devising these dollars.
And, and I think that, if I can add one more thing, if you'd say, uh, recruitment and, and the county showing a commitment is, as I have personally told the private individuals, um, and trying to make sure that we're resourcing as much funding as possible, um, it's far easier to go to these, uh, these, uh, people and businesses and ask for a donation when they understand the county has also made a same commitment. Um, and so, um, you know, when, when we're asking for six-figure donations for people to be involved in the event center to make it uh, successful as possible, um, knowing that the county is also invested in it, um, shows a lot of unity and support that, that helps me in my conversation with people trying to, to gain more funding.
I, I totally agree. So, just, uh, and, and so that the community's aware, you know, youth has been one of the target of the ARPA funds that the county invested in. And some of the other projects that, uh, we did within the community was, uh, to the Kids Club of Harney County to get the Geno's Gym uh, finalized because that required, uh, local contributions for their other funders to come along. Uh, without that additional funding from these ARPA dollars, they would not have been able to secure the additional funding they needed to complete the project. And so a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars was donated to that project to help complete Geno's Gym and secure the additional funding they needed. And so that was one investment, uh, in twenty-twenty-one that the county court made, uh, you know, to support that type of project that, as we can see, you know, the fruits of it are great. Uh, there's a lot of after-school activities beyond all the other things that they're doing that really is an investment back into the youth of the community.
How, how was that assessed at the time by the, by the court at that time as a, as a, um, an authorized use of the funds?
Um, I'll look back in my thing to see what we exactly put it in, but it was one of the allowable expenses at the time, uh, under the NACO guidance. Uh, the other one was to the High Desert Park and Recs. Uh, they were in need of, uh, their solar being, uh, fixed in order to run the swimming pool. And so there was an investment of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars made so that they could complete it with the funding that they had, as well as go out for additional funding, uh, with that, which allowed this swimming pool to be up and going, not just for youth, but I know, other people in the community also like using the pool. It's, uh, one of the few assets that we have in this community that, that gives us, you know, an opportunity to have some earthings for the kids to do, as well as other people. Um, you know, it's not every community gets a swimming pool. We're kind of fortunate to have that, and so that investment was also, um, one of the things that the court did invest in.
So, so I say that, the Kids Club, um, the category that that was used under was assistance to nonprofits.
Yes.
So that is an allowable expense, um, to nonprofits. The the pool, I'm not sure about.
It is to help with the, the solar.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a, it's its own, um, special taxing district. So I'm not sure how that, where that would have come in under as far as an allowable expense. So I'm not, I wanna make sure, I, I think the biggest thing, we're, we're subject to audit on these funds up till twenty thirty-two, I think it said. And I wanna make sure that we're within the appropriate. And I want to make sure that we're within the appropriate uh categories of spending funds. I don't want to uh find out four or five years later that we put funds towards an unauthorized use. And then the county would be liable for paying them back.
Yeah, and the negative econ- economic impacts was one of them that I think definitely uh.
Well, in their, in their manual, in their handout, under, under negative economic impacts, they, they talk about uh low to moderate income. Households. Households experienced unemployment, households that experienced increased food or housing insecurity, households that qualify for chip. So so this is the the household itself, the programs that would help households and.
There there was a different one.
Um and then again impacted households. Uh but this is under. Public assess or public health, public, public safety, public health and humans services staff. Um capital expenditures must be related to public health or negative economic impacts and be proposed. Proportional to the pandemic impact identified.
Well, I think we have a question. I would, I know the facility at the fairgrounds is a lot of. Stuff that's happening, but how I understood it was the updating of utilities is costing somewhere around one point five million. So it seems like if this. That seemed like a allowable expense for this money was updating of utilities. Is that accurate or is that not?
That that was some of the original expenditure requirement or um allowable requirements.
Cities and municipalities can use it for water, sewer, power.
Yeah, so it seems like we.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing it in this, but I know it was in the original guidance that we received. Which obviously, as we heard, you know, a hundred years of.
There was a.
Seems like the county, the tier market for use of utilities, which would then bring up some of the other money to fund.
I I could confirm that what Commissioner Shelman is correct in the original uh guidance that we had. That um this was allowable for sure.
And say, I know I attended the NACO um webinars on it and everything that we did. Fit in with guidelines that were presented in those webinars.
So here is a.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So there is a. Um a negative economic impacts, aid to impacted industries. The final rule states that an industry can be designated as impacted. If the industry is in the travel, tourism or hospitality sector, the industry is impacted. And then another bullet, uh recipients, i.e. counties have flexibility to divide, to define industries.
Which I think even the uh park and rec. Investment fits within a lot of that.
And then it speaks to staffing and hiring and retiring people that may have been laid off. I don't think the county had to lay anybody off as a roof.
No, they didn't.
Recovery funds may be used to improve the effi- if. Efficiency, efficacy, efficacy of public health and economic programs. Supporting programs, evaluation data and outreach through program evaluation, data analysis, resource. Administrative needs, capital expenditures.
It's community outreach and engagement activities.
So I I I'm not opposed, not opposed to to the event center receiving some funding. I'm just going to make sure we have our. Keys crossed, eyes dotted, all that to make sure that.
And there's some other uh expenditures when I got this turned out that um because they don't have any labeling. I I don't know, it it feels like a little bit of nickel and diming was going on with some of this with. Some of these smaller, you know, twenty-two ninety-nine for an expenditure that that designated as ARPA. And so we'll need to look at this ledger um and make sure that. Some of this was correctly designated.
Kind of nebulous question, how we got to within six weeks of this happening to be spent and all of a sudden I have five hundred thousand dollars. And don't run the weeds because I haven't attended all meetings thoroughly, but.
Was it, it it kind of fell off our radar. I I knew that I had a. Project with the fairgrounds going on, that it was one of our original conversations. And so when Judge Hart brought it up, I I wasn't unaware.
And and some of our conversations though too.
I think it just had to have an allocation. I didn't know that it had to have the even this particular designation of allocation. Um I knew that the final project didn't have to be completed till it was twenty twenty-five and so. Um yeah, we just hadn't circled back on it as a governing body.
My color comment again. Um I think it also seems like as far as the other. Options that have been suggested so far. This, the fairground project is very clearly, we have a contract in place, you just have to move the money over to it. Versus needing to get appraisals, having to do negotiations on price, having to figure out a bunch of things. I think an appraisal even in Harney County sometimes can take like a month. I just went through.
Well, I.
So.
I'd be remiss if I didn't put all possibilities out there. Okay, so um. If I just go with blinders looking at one thing, then I'm not doing my job. So I'm going to put all the options out there where this money can be spent. The fairgrounds event center is one of them. The the My Wave Building, the state building that My Wave is in, is another one. Um I have some other, some other uh. Uh items, grocery list items that I'd like to uh look at spending some of these funds on. And that are mentioned in this. And one of them, um we have budgeted this year for a law enforcement vehicle. But that's one of the things that specifically said is vehicles. Um if we use these funds for that, then those funds get to be reused and put into the beginning fund balance next year. And helps the budget at the beginning of next year. Um it's a way of, it's a way of. Authorized expenditures for general fund expenditures that helps the general fund. But a law enforcement vehicle, home health and hospice um needs a vehicle. Our, our um and this one might, I'd have to research this one a little bit. As far as vehicles go though, our assessor's office is going to need a vehicle next year, which. If we use these funds for, if we use these funds for the law enforcement and home health and hospice vehicle this year, that frees up funds next year that we can buy a vehicle for. For the assessor's office. Um courthouse doors, uh there's about a, we've got a grant to do the back doors in the courthouse. About fourteen thousand dollars though has got to come from the, from the county for um. Or to uh connect the alarm system to it and just above and beyond what the grant was. Um our jail project, RFQ and RFP process of both legal review and and planning efforts for that. And then um the general funds lost revenue, which would be the um. The uh calculation that I got to figure out how much we could have transferred over with that. If it's in excess of the hundred and sixty thousand, and there could be more there that comes from that. Goes into general fund and then can be allocated to other, other projects, maybe the fair or wherever, you know. But if it's in general fund, then we can spend it. Wherever. Um and then in this list, I did have event center. Um and my calculation on all those added up was three hundred thousand to the event center and then those other categories. Equating to a hundred and seventy or two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Just my shopping list.
And in a work session, we aren't making decisions, but we are discussing it so that when we go into an actual public meeting, that we can make those decisions.
Did somebody?
Yeah, I just wanted to address more, try to, in in, you know, in regards to the fairgrounds. Um you know, some of the things we have already been mentioned, but. You know, we we need to remember the fairgrounds is synonymous in the heart of all rural communities. Um with consideration of my family, community health, portion of my job. Um we have to take into consideration that the fairgrounds is basically a safe house. For animals and people enduring natural disasters, just as we found out. And it's not just for us, it's for surrounding coun- county, you know, counties. If there's wildfires continuing like they have. Um my, the other thing was eventually, I think it was in the final phase, they talked about uh you have plans for a commercial type kitchen. Um we're wanting to strengthen the small farm production of our county, you know, with concerns. And developing a solution about food disparity uh by um. Put, you know, increasing more small farms, producing fresh produce. Um and developing Carney grown products, you know, products of Carney grown and a commercial kitchen would be excellent for that. Uh people could rent that out, you know, so there would be some revenue that would come from that. But in respects for selling anything from Carney grown, it has to be done through a commercial kitchen. That, you know, so those are just some considerations also.
The uh the section on infrastructure on water and sewer, um and with your question about the, about the um. Uh infrastructure out at the fairgrounds. It says, and again, this is, I don't like this because they didn't send us, they didn't send us a guide on.
It's been a challenging communication with NACO getting the communication back of the counties.
But this is the most recent. Most recent guidance as of February of twenty-two. Water and sewer infrastructure, counties can use, can use. To make a broad range of water and sewer infrastructure investments. New eligible water and sewer projects under the IFR eligible projects were aligned. I'm not sure what IFR stands for. Clean water, state revolving fund and drinking water. So final rule provides additional eligible projects. A broader set of lead redemption remediation projects. Um so, you know, facilities with lead pipes or. Culverts, residential wells, certain dams and reservoirs. Cold repairs. And then broad, then it goes into broadband infrastructure and we've spent eighty-three thousand dollars on broadband. So I'm, I think we've, I'm, I'm good with that myself. I don't really want to invest anymore there. We didn't get any much return on the last one, so. So I I. My input would be if we can spend some of this to lessen the burden on the general fund. And then whatever is left over, if we can get a ruling or find out that it's justifiable for the event center, I'm okay with that. And that's basically what I put together here.
Well, like I say, just the water and sewer alone would um be something we can do. By the end of the year, being that project's already underway, so it totally means. That going. Um I wouldn't mind hearing from Commissioner Elect Frank, just as an input.
Hey, what Judge Harris said, I would prioritize making ourselves more administratively and. Put ourselves in a better position for the coming year. And then I would put the remainder of it towards the big project and have ongoing. Commissioner Doro, have you. Been brought up to speed on the new developments after that last fairboard meeting in terms of that project?
No, is there a recording available for me to review?
Um let me share a graphic with you real quick. You can see this on the app. But I think when you're talking about how those funds will be used, it's important to keep in mind the sweet picture.
I'm not seeing it good enough yet.
Original design uh during the contract.
This, this main part that I'm exiting right here is already has funds procured for it and is already underway. That's the main. The main facility. But all these little wings here that are also going to be integral in this part will have bathrooms and conference rooms on it. Those will have to come later when we get more funding. So they've already started raising funds for these other parts that can be added right onto it. And this part, which is the moneymaker, which will have the conference rooms and a kitchen and the bathrooms. This can't be completed or probably won't be completed until these other parts are. So if those funds, the ARPA funds, could go towards helping get these completed, then we'd be one step closer to getting that so that we could house. Business conferences. And this would bolster our emergency preparedness. So I just think that picture. Yeah, you can see it there. That picture is important because this part is already taken care of. They're already.
Current budget.
Yeah, they're already working on electrical and plumbing and all the utilities. That can manage this facility and any future planning. This is taken care of. These extra ARPA funds could help with these wings, which would help with emergency preparedness. And then when we can procure more funds, we can go towards that moneymaker, so.
And it, and it kind of goes back to what I was saying, uh that sixty-foot piece that would replace the memorial building will have to be an ask at the legislative level. That we're um gearing up to pursue uh in a culture and arts caucus. Um that Representative Owens has now joined on our behalf. And so in order to do that, um like I say, if there's investment from the county on the rest of this project that we can demonstrate. Back to the legislature, um it's going to make. All of us that have to make that pitch and try to secure those dollars uh a a little easier conversation. But um. You know, if we're, if we don't have the funding for those other parts, it's kind of jumping ahead uh due to the level of funding that will be needed. To secure the uh other concourse area.
I have a question regarding um, since I wasn't at that fair board meeting and I haven't reviewed any recording that might exist. Um the shortfalls in electricity to support livestock and other events. Is that going to be taken care of? Is that, does that come under that big? Infrastructure square that uh Commissioner like Frank just pointed out is taken care of for this year coming up?
So, so the four point five that we have budgeted goes into that centerpiece that he. Showed. But we can take, due to most of the water, sewer and electrical. Is part of this first phase under that. And so all these dollars could be utilized towards this first phase budget within, which would then allow some of those other. Funds that don't have to be designated for water and sewer to go towards those other pieces. That need to be completed.
Thank you.
And there is private funding that is being secured. And as Craig said, you know. Knowing that the county is also contributing helps those private funders um. Feel more secure about what they're doing as well. Uh we're, we're getting some very uh generous donations from the private funding sector to try to help with some of this. But.
Has the county received any of those funds yet?
No, they're in um conversation at this point, but some of them are waiting to see. What goes on with some of this uh to feel more secure about making those type of donations, so.
Separate conversation altogether, but we need to make sure that those funds are received properly.
Oh.
Budgetarily wise, if we have to create a, a donation line or something in the budget that.
Yeah, I've talked to Bobby Joe about how that would occur. So I appreciate the conversation today though, the work session, appreciate you folks attending today. I know it takes time out of your day. Someone participate in this.
One other item on my list that I, that I overstepped or went by was uh our rural landfill permitting. The ten-year permits through DEQ are up this year and we're in the process of trying to get those re-permitted for all of our rural. Um residents that use those landfills and. We didn't realize everything that was going to be required for that process. Um we've already paid six thousand dollars for a. Um landfill plan. And then now they're wanting uh engineering work done on, on the new pits that were put in. Um so we're looking at potentially another ten to fifteen thousand dollars on, on the landfills to get those permitted. Uh so just other, other general fund obligations and specific obligations that we have that. If we can use some of these funds for that, that would.
What's the duration on those?
Ten year.
One, one thing I would like to say one more, and I appreciate you giving us the latitude to speak a little bit. Um is if we didn't have this money, the county would still. Um is that if we didn't have this money, the county would still have to do those things. They would still have to buy police vehicles and and assessor vehicles, and the county would still have to do those things. So if you look from a a business standpoint um and say, well, I have this extra funds, can I put this into a place that generates more revenue? And I think the fairgrounds project is something that gives the vision to generate more revenue. Um being this is a one-time funding deal, um the county would still have to do all those other things. Regardless of this money was there or not. And and so I just wanna make sure that's taken into consideration that. That the county would still have to buy vehicles or do all the things the county takes to operate. Uh but this is a one-time gift that's been given to us. So to make sure that we utilize that money in the best way. I think is is super important because this might not be another fund that comes along for another period of time, so.
Well, and it's kind of a rare opportunity that you actually get funds that create more economic value where. Sadly, some of the services we have are obligations and they don't have that ability to create additional economic value.
So.
And.
Oh, go ahead.
For the record, I'm uh Anne Anne Marie Becker, and I'm also the treasurer for the Carney Funding and Livestock Show and Auction. And I just want to kind of. Kind of reiterate a little bit of what Craig said is that. The economic impact that the facility we bring into the community, I think, would be. Astronomical. And I think it's something that could be felt fairly soon. Whereas some things may take years. I think once, once we start the the completion of this and um. Even without the the moneymaker section right now. Um just the events and that that could be brought in, I think the community would feel that impact right away. Um I am a member of three other. Um nationally recognized like livestock associations, and I know that they are all searching. For new venues to have an MZ, so I think would be a great thing.
Thank you. Can you just add a little bit to that economic impact? So I know we're talking about like getting that cover over those livestock stalls. So when we add that cover, it's not only a benefit to the livestock kids, but like when high school, you're on the peewee road, you'll come around, that's a hundred and twenty stalls at twenty-five dollars. Off per night. And so when the peewees come into town in the high school, we make about six thousand dollars off stalls. We would. Almost double what we would have with stalls, so we turn a six thousand dollar event into a twelve thousand dollar event overnight. Year. And then when you start adding multiple events who are doing that. About this, so it's not just, I mean, it 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 does it, it has the immediate results.
So those um um additional revenues. And I know there's still maintenance and everything that needs to be done at the fairgrounds, but I think this year's budget is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the, from the general fund to the fair. Um so as those that those venues start generating more revenues, then we can realize less. Less pressure to the general fund.
Yeah, that's the potential that it has.
I mean, it, I mean, I mean, I don't mean Lindsay to have these conversations, but. I mean, I think the role of the fairgrounds would be be self-sufficient enough until a point in which the general fund was very limited. You know, and and I think that's a possibility that can certainly happen. There's. You know, a lot of work to be done and and there's a lot of, you know, legwork that has to be done, but but I agree with that statement, Bill, that. The fairgrounds can really generate money to become more self-sufficient.
Well, and there's still an opportunity at the legislative level that we're really hoping to see come to fruition with. The lottery dollars and um yeah, there's been a lot of good headway on it in the past. Um we have a a pretty good opportunity to secure actual sustainable funding to almost. Tune of two hundred and some odd thousand dollars, which would completely eliminate that general fund bill. Just on the legislative side, if that can be achieved. And so the more things that we can do to show the legislature that we're, you know, grateful for their. You know, donations to Harney County. Return of our tax dollars to Harney County, I'll do that one. Cause that's, that's what it is, is our tax dollars coming back to our communities to be invested. And so it's one more opportunity for us to showcase what we're doing at the fairgrounds. That also showcases why if they were to do that kind of lottery funding, sustainable support to the fairgrounds. How it could help that overall economic picture, especially for these rural counties. Um you know, we're not unique to the problems of fairgrounds, they're statewide, and so. You know, those lottery dollars can be in recognition to it, but anything that we can do that helps showcase. What we're doing locally back to the legislature is just one more. Talking point that we have when we deal with them, so. You know, I think that, you know, there's, there's just a lot of that big picture stuff that we have. Headway that we're making finally, which uh. It's, it's always one of those deals where it's just keeping your foot in the door and keeping pulling forward and. Some of those opportunities are getting much closer than they have been in the past and.
Is that a recalculation? Is that legislation, I think we get eighty thousand or eighty-three thousand, something like that?
Yeah, it's only fifty-three.
From for the fair, right? That's the money we get from the state for the fair. And is that basically, I think I heard something about that, a recalculation of how those funds are distributed or an increase of?
Well, it'd be securing the one percent from the lottery dollars to to be distributed to fairgrounds statewide.
Um so again, we can't make any decisions in a work session. We'll have to bring this forward in county court and um. Um we don't have time. I I still got more research to do on authorized expenditures. I wanna make sure.
I think we need to look back over some of these others as we do that, as we're getting close to this uh.
So let's look at um. Hopefully I'd have the information I need by the first county court session in December and put it on the agenda for that. And then we can have the rest of the month to be able to receive to, you know, whatever we need to do to obligate or.
We'll just need to go back over some of these smaller ones that don't clarify what they are.
I I'm sure that like, like these Visa card ones hopefully have some kind of receipts next to them that.
Correct, we just need to pull that up.
Yeah. Um so that's. Yeah, um that's my. My pitch, I guess, you know, I mean, if there's areas that we could uh utilize. Now that lessens the burden on this year's general fund expenditures and whatever's left over would go to the vet center. Um we can have that final discussion and and vote or whatever the next county. Court session.
In December.
In December, the next, yeah, first of December.
Do you want me to take it off the agenda for that eighteenth?
Yeah, cause I'm I'm not gonna have time. Um all next week is AOC and um. I'm not gonna have time. I've got emails out there right now. I'm waiting on answers back from, but I don't, I'm gonna have it by Monday.
Judge Hart, I'd appreciate it if uh you can, between now and that December meeting. Send out an email to the county court members on on the um. The things you you mentioned and the cost of those, because I do wanna think about it and I do wanna think about the difference between. Stuff that would help our general fund, but as sort of as Craig mentioned, is ongoing stuff. I mean. Unfortunately, we have to live within our means of our reduced revenues over time, including purchase of vehicles at times. Compared to some unusual, more unusual things. I just wanna have time to think about what you said. Um between now and our and our decision meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I can do that. Um I've got some. I need to do a little bit more fine tuning on these numbers. I did round them a little bit, but uh it could be a little bit less than what I put on here. Um my idea was that if they were a little bit less than than the. Any additional funds that would go in lost revenues for for county. Uh revenues would go into that, just be rounded up into that. But um. Anyway, that's uh that's where we're at. Any other?
Okay, to adjourn.
Alright, motion has been made to adjourn. All second. All favor?
Right.
Bye.
Bye.
Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.